Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone for the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty Planning Board hearing for the town of Brookhaven. I'd like to introduce the board. Well, before, let me introduce the board. I have Mr. Pete Zarcone.
Hello.
Present.
Present.
Patricia Kelly.
President.
Mr. Steve Alutis.
Here.
Karen Dunn.
Here.
Richard Smith.
Present.
John Rose.
Present.
I'm Vincent Pascal, I'm present. We also have what is council to the Planning Board, Ms. Lee Ray, Secretary to the Planning Board, Ms. Aileen McCallion, and Commissioner of the Planning Environmental Land Management, Ms. Beth Riley. Before we begin, Ms. McCallion, are any items on the agenda that will not be heard this afternoon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number eight, the Arboretum at Farming Hill would like to be held to an open date. And also, item number ten, Tyler Avenue at Miller Place has requested to be adjourned until November ninth.
Okay, on that number eight, you said to adjourn to an open date. I have it down, they're going to have to re-advertise, so.
Yes.
Okay, so, we're not going to pick an open date.
Okay.
You'll just have to come back and you'll re-advertise when they're ready to do that, okay?
Okay.
All right. With that, I'd like to start with item number one, Quorum Omega Lot Twenty-Seven at Quorum. Commissioner?
The relief of covenant on the map of Quorum Omega Lot Twenty-Seven Campfire Lane in Quorum. The applicant requests an increase in clearing limit from seventy percent to eighty-five percent. Survey depicts current clearing at eighty percent. The parcel is approximately twenty thousand square feet, not located within any critical environmental areas, and is currently zoned A1 residential. Based on previous approvals within the subdivision and the location of the property outside of all critical environmental areas, the Division of Environmental Protection agrees with the applicant to increase the existing clearing limits. Division of Environmental Protection recommends an allowance of an increase in clearing from seventy percent to eighty-five percent. All areas counted as natural shall not have sod and must be planted with natural stock. Submit covenants and final survey prior to filing, and the staff comments are last dated eight twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone from the public in the meeting with us on this council?
Someone has, if someone is here to speak on this application, they need to let me know. In the chat function, so far, I only, no one has responded, no one's put in what applications they're here for, so just give us a minute.
There's no questions from the public, with that being said, board have any questions on item number one? If not, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion by Mr. Rose.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith. Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Alutis.
Aye.
Mr. Dunn, Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item number two, Old Stump Road Land Division, Lot B at Brookhaven.
Relief of covenant application on the map of Old Stump Road Land Division Lot B, eighty-six Old Stump Road. The applicant requests to increase clearing limits from thirty-eight percent to forty-eight percent. Survey submitted depicts current clearing limits at forty-eight percent. The parcel is approximately sixty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-five square feet. It's within the Pine Barrens compatible growth area and coastal zone area, south critical environmental area, and the Carmen's River Conservation and Management Area and Fireplace Historic District, and is currently zoned A Residence One. Based on the community characteristics in the surrounding area, including all covenants and restrictions for adjacent subdivisions, current clearing limits for the property are more restrictive. Furthermore, for properties this size within the CGA, the maximum clearing limit is fifty, sorry, forty-six percent. The Division of Environmental Protection agrees with the applicant to increase the existing clearing limits and recommends, there are five of them, allowance of a clearing limit increase from thirty-eight percent to forty-eight percent, revegetate areas in excess of forty-six percent. All areas counted as natural shall not include sod and must be replanted with natural stock. Submit covenants and final survey prior to submitting to the county, and the last revision date is nine eight, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Commissioner. If anyone in the public is in this Zoom meeting for the Planning Board, please state your name and the application for which you'd like to speak on in the chat room, so we know that you want to speak on any of these individual applications. Counselor, is anyone in the chat room for this application?
Yes, Diane Moje is here for this application.
Okay, can we bring her in?
She's in.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Ms. Moje, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Okay. What is it that you would?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am before you with request for increase of clearing from thirty-eight percent to forty-eight percent. I have the recommendations from staff suggesting that we can go to forty-six percent. That would make the owner have to revegetate approximately twelve hundred and twenty-four square feet. We are agreeable to this. I, if the board has any questions, we'd be happy to address it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moje. Does the board have any questions? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion?
That's Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Ms. Kelly.
Mr. Chairman, it's board member Pete Zarcone, I make a motion, I'll second that motion.
Okay, second by Mr. Zarcone, Mr. Alutis.
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you, Ms. Moje.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Item number three, Port Woods, lot number eighteen at Port Jeff Station.
Relief of covenant request is for a request in clearing limit increase from forty-six percent to ninety-seven percent. The survey submitted depicts clearing at seventy-seven percent. It's located out of, outside of the New York State Pine Barrens, is located within the town's critical environments, area of Pine Barrens. Homes in the subdivision are located to the southwest and east, and a single family home exists to the north. The parcel is currently zoned A1, is approximately forty thousand two hundred square feet. The property owner is seeking a lot line adjustment that would reduce the area of the subject site from forty thousand square feet to thirty-one thousand two hundred. There are eight staff recommendations, last dated nine nine, two thousand and twenty. The request for ninety-seven percent is inconsistent with the clearing limits for the subdivision and for most properties subject to Pine Barrens clearing standards. The applicant is seeking to divide the property in a way that would remove the majority of the existing natural vegetation. Assuming that it's approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Division of Environmental Protection suggests a fifty-eight percent clearing limit to remain with the subject parcel, which is described in staff condition number two, and not the portion that's going to be split off and added to the adjoining parcel. The fifty-eight percent clearing limit is consistent with the previous approvals for this subdivision. So if you look at your staff recommendations, it's a little bit different here, I just want to go over it with you. This part here that I'm showing you, where it says vacant, this is a part of this overall piece here. They're looking to move the lot line from here to here, so that this will now be one parcel. So the clearing limit would be removed from this parcel and would remain in its entirety on this parcel. So we're not recommending a denial of forty-six percent to ninety-seven percent, but approving an increase in clearing limits on forty-six to fifty-eight percent on this parcel here, which is part of the parcel to the south. And then recommending that the parcel to the north no longer have a clearing limit, that's here. They have to revegetate the areas cleared in excess of fifty-eight percent on this parcel to the south. Submit all covenants and surveys prior to filing, and it will be subject to the Board of Appeals approval for that lot line modification.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is the applicant present on this application?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we bring whoever is in. Are you bringing the applicant in, Counselor?
She's in.
Yes, okay, I'm in. Hi.
That's Tracy's permit.
Tracy Rivera.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Tracy Rivera, office is located at Tracy's Permits, eighty Terry Street, Patchogue, New York, one one seven seven two. Good afternoon, I hope everyone's safe and well, and getting used to this, I guess you can see there's these Zoom meetings, and this is the first one I'm doing in planning, I've had quite a few before Zone Board. We're actually back before the Zone Board this Wednesday for this application that's been on the holdover. Unfortunately, we started to do the lot line modification, we really did not realize that there were any restrictions and covenants, because they were not shown on any of the surveys. So the original application that went before the Board of Appeals was put on the holdover till things were cleared up with your department. I know the owner themselves had correspondence with the Planning Division and is in agreement, this is the agreement that they came up with, it's just basically changing the lot line and then re-veging, and there'll be finally restrictions and covenants and moving forward that. If you take notice, the smaller lot, which is not shown on this survey, it's that smaller area right there, is actually probably the smallest parcel in the entire area, and it's like not even conforming, so actually, by approving this lot line modification, really makes the parcels more even, it makes the entire area more conforming. So, you know, we're in favor of the application, we're obviously in favor of the recommendations since they were, you know, gone over before today, so, thank you.
Okay, that area that was just, you just noted, that smaller area, is that going to be continued, or is that going to be part and parcel to the area to the east?
Yes, so it'll make, yep, so it'll make that small parcel that's really a hundred by a hundred, it'll now make it a hundred by, I think, one ninety, I think the property's ninety deep, so.
It is. Okay, I guess, or note, I mean, is there anyone else in the chat room, Counselor, that would like to speak?
No.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
Just one question, Mr. Chairman, this is Richard Smith.
Hello.
Why would there be no clearing limits on the newly created or expanded lot?
Because that lot never had any restrictions and clearing limitations, there was never anything imposed on it, it was only the larger lot, so when they came up with the, when they came up with the new restrictions and covenants, they kept it the same way and just imposed it on the, on the larger parcel, the parcel that's losing it.
But weren't they one lot before? It was one lot before.
They were never one lot, the smaller lot that's a hundred by a hundred, that will be obtaining the larger, you know, the addition, never had restrictions or covenants imposed on the parcel. So they're not imposing restrictions and covenants on the parcel, even though we're obtaining, we're obtaining more property from it.
My question was to the Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Why would there be no clearing limits on that lot, the expanded lot?
Because the larger parcel is going to take all of the clearing limits.
Okay, I see.
So this parcel to the south will retain all of it. This parcel is wooded, it's my understanding their intention is to keep it mostly that way as a buffer, but the southerly lot here, they're going to have everything, they're going to take everything from both lots.
I understand, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, any other questions by the board? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dunn. Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Alutis.
Aye.
I vote aye.
I got you. Mr. Rose.
I vote aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, I know you put notes on for the chat room there, is anybody responding to those members sending out?
Slowly.
Okay, let's go.
But if anyone is here to speak on an application, please let me know in the Q and A or in the chat function, and let me know what meeting you are here for, and whether you're for the applicant, or whether you are here to speak from the public.
Thank you. Item number four, Lorraine Woods, lot number six at Medford.
The application before you is an increase in clearing limit from thirty-six percent to fifteen-nine percent. The survey submitted depicts clearing limits at fifty-nine percent. The parcel is located outside of New York State Central Pine Barrens, and is approximately thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-six square feet, and zoned A Residence One. The Division of Environmental Protection agrees to increase the clearing limit and recommends a denial of the increase thirty-six percent to fifty-nine percent, and recommends an allowance of it being increased to fifty-eight percent. Submit covenants and restrictions prior to filing in Suffolk County, submitting a final survey prior to filing. Let's check, just want to check one thing, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we changed them, I'm sorry, what I have on my paper.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah, so we are allowing the increase to fifty-eight percent, but we're not going to have them revegetate that, we're going to allow it to naturally revegetate for that extra one percent. So it's three, five staff recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep.
Is the applicant present on this application?
Yes, Mr. Malguinare is here.
Okay, bring him in.
I'm here.
Good afternoon, please raise your right hand. You swear, okay, okay, thought we were in a mirror. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
All right, you want to talk on behalf of the application?
We're okay with the recommendations.
You're good with all five conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else on this application, Counselor?
Oh, there's no one else here.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Malguinare? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place this matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Ms. Kelly.
Mr. Chairman, this is board member Pete Zarcone, I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Zarcone, Mr. Alutis.
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Item number five, Pine Woods at Quorum Lot One Forty-two at Quorum.
Relief of covenant before you recommend, requests an increase in clearing limit from fifty-eight percent to seventy percent. The survey submitted depicts clearing to be ninety percent. Parcel is located outside of the New York State Pine Barrens, but is located within the town's designated Pine Barrens. It's, the property is located adjacent to lots within the same subdivision and the Pine Ridge Golf Club. It's approximately fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-one square feet, and is currently zoned A Residence One. Division of Environmental Protection is no objection to this application, and the new clearing limit will meet town's current clearing standards for lots this size. Recommend an approval of the clearing limit increase from fifty-eight percent to seventy percent. Allowance of the fence to remain within the buffer. Removal of the brick and loose stone area out of the buffer. Revegetate areas in excess of seventy percent and the fifteen-foot buffer. Submit a detailed revegetation plan, submit a survey and amend the covenants prior to recording. And there's six staff conditions, last dated nine ten, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone present for this application, Counselor?
Yes, I have Mr. Placido, who's here.
Okay, bring him in.
And, just waiting for him to. Yes.
Yes. How are you? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Placido, can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay, you want to speak, this is your application?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're just looking to possibly put in an in-ground pool, as well clear out some of the vegetation we had, and just want to do everything the right way and follow in accordance with any clearance level that could be increased. And I do understand, once everything's done, I will, may have to revegetate to meet the seventy percent, but I have no problem with that. I just ask for permission to do so, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on this application?
I have no one else.
Okay, questions by the board?
Dunn.
May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing and place the item on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Rose.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith. Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Alutis.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item number six, Waiting River Estates, lot number forty-seven.
The relief requested is an increase in clearing limit from fifty-two percent to eighty-five percent. The applicant intends to install a pool and create space for children to play. The survey submitted depicts current clearing at seventy-six percent. The parcel is located within the central Pine Barrens compatible growth area, and is approximately eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-one square feet, and is zoned A Residence One. Division of Environmental Protection is no objection to an increase in clearing limits of the property based on the preservation of thirty-six acres of land within the subdivision, and the precedence of granting multiple lots of increase in clearing limits. The DEP recommends seventy percent for this parcel, which is consistent with the expanding clearing limits for parcels of similar size within the subdivision and within the Pine Barrens. Furthermore, the survey shows that the property, if the property were to be revegetated to fifty-three percent, there would still be room for the proposed pool. Seventy percent clearing limit would provide approximately thirty-two hundred square feet of lawn space if the pool were installed as proposed. So the staff recommends a denial of clearing limit increase from fifty-two percent to eighty-five percent. Approval of an increase to seventy percent. Revegetate areas in excess of seventy percent and submit a revegetation plan, submit amended covenants and final survey prior to recording.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is the applicant present, Counselor?
I don't have anyone here for this application.
Okay, does the board have any questions on this application?
Go.
May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve Alutis, I make a motion to close this public hearing and place it on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Alutis.
Chairman, this is board member Pete Zarcone, I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Zarcone, Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Moving on to miscellaneous matters, the Tesla Science Center Visitor Center at Shoreham.
Property is located on the northeast corner of New York State Route Twenty-Five A and Randall Road in Shoreham. Zone J business is approximately sixteen and a half acres. The proposal is to do a change in use from a residence to a visitor's center for the Tesla museum and a facade change. This application was previously approved by this board on November twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. The applicant proposes to use the change of use from a residence, which was stated on their nineteen seventy-six CEU, as a visitor's center for the Nikola Tesla former lab. Facade change to the building is proposed and has received HDAC approval. Submission of a parking lot plan was a previous condition under the two thousand and sixteen approval, and the application is also having a proposed monument sign. There are nine staff recommendations for approval, last dated nine seventeen, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Commissioner, is the applicant present?
Yes, it's Michael Russo.
Hey, Mr. Russo, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Russo, you want to talk on the application?
Yeah, absolutely, thanks for the opportunity, everybody. So, as you guys know, we've been in, at this for a long time, we bought the property in two thousand and thirteen, part of our strategic development, other than raising money, was the adaptive reuse of some buildings, the valuation of some buildings, things like that. That led us to an application for a minor addition and restoration of the, what is known as the Bauer House, which is this building on its own, on its own lot, that's part of the sixteen-acre-plus property. We had received approval from this board several years ago, as Ms. Riley said, and we've been in the process of doing a lot of things to make it happen, including putting through the process of this former superfund site, and going through the process with the prior owners, Agfa, with the, all the steps that we need to go through for when we disturb soil. What that, what that came through is that we have a, we had to go through, as the plans depict, putting in a new sanitary system to replace the old, and we are moments away from getting that. What we ended up having to do, which took the longest, was ending, going into a decree, consent decree with Agfa and the DEC. The DEC asked for it to be updated and update the process for the SMP, really just about the, the process of when soil gets dug up, or like a foundation, where is it going to go, things like that, how does it get documented? So it took longer than we expected. During the last four years, the building has fell into further disrepair as well, and we've been doing things like putting tarpes and doing other things that we can do to make sure it doesn't get too much worse. But part of this is the, where we thought two years would have been enough to get a permit, are obviously our approvals from this board has, has lapsed. So our request today is to re, to renew, I guess, the, the approval that we've gotten before, and I have two requests that, as part of the conditions of the prior recommendations from HDAC, that I'd like for reconsideration by this board.
Okay, you want to state those questions?
Sure, it's, it's actually two fairly simple things. One is the siding, and the second are the windows. The siding has, is saturated with lead paint, and it was the hope that the HD, by the HDAC that we would make reasonable accommodations to try to reuse and keep intact the existing siding. Due to water damage over the last four plus, and then forty years prior, the, the siding is, is severely deteriorated, we'd have to take the siding off to replace the substrate that is water damaged, and to be able to do that in a, in a feasible way, both for the integrity of the thin siding, as well as costs that go along with it, and mitigation, it is severe. The, you know, part of that impact is that the budgets of two thousand and sixteen and bids back then, you know, have considerably come up, in addition to all of, all those means and methods, it's pretty detailed in, on the labor side. The other has to do with the windows, same thing, a lot of windows have been broken over the years, and we can still provide windows that look and feel similar to what is there, we're not looking to change the character of the proposed building, it's still going to look the same from the street and for the visitor's standpoint. I will also bring to everybody's attention, since the board is slightly different than the last time we presented about this, is that the town board on their, on our request and their unanimous support, after we bought the property, declared the property as a historic place on the town register, which then, which is what brought HDAC's review to the application. Prior to that, HDAC would not have had any overview of, of our application. The, just for another correction of record, the prior use of the, of the building has a CFO as an office space. We had gotten those records from the building department, and we had submitted them, you know, to staff, which I know Luke and Amy have them on record. So thankfully, it is a commercial use to a commercial use, to make this our visitor's center. We're ready to execute contracts with contractors in the next two weeks, so we can lock in our prices, lock in our schedule, and, you know, look to have our groundbreaking as quickly as the building department would allow us. And, you know, obviously endeavor to invite everybody to come and visit us once, once we're open.
What is the, the existing siding that has to be replaced with material is that?
It's a thin cedar straight-line shake, shake, and we would replace it in kind.
With cedar shake?
Mm-hmm, absolutely, and it'll be sealed and painted to look just like it's been there for the last seventy-plus years.
Okay. Does the board have?
I have up the HDAC letter, and I don't see what you're referencing, it's, it's referring to plans, so what you're saying is that the plans you submitted are what you want to change?
The, there was an exhibit, an original exhibit, that the original application came along with, that referenced their recommendations. I don't think that the recommendations, final approval of HDAC recommends final approval of design submitted, there was a reference document that, that went on to the drawings.
So it's a design submitted that you're referring to, it's not the HDAC letter?
So the HDAC made recommendations, and those recommendations by the prior, four years ago, were put on the drawings in a list and incorporated in the drawings. There were minor items, but the two specific items, like for example, one of the items was, we were looking to get rid of both, both chimneys. Then, one of the recommendations was, well, if we don't need the chimneys anymore, could we rebuild one of them, the one that is westernmost on the building, could we rebuild it and The one that is westernmost on the building, could we rebuild it and make it look like it's been there for eighty years? So that's one of the conditions that we still maintain that we're okay with, as an example. Some of the other examples have to do with trying to replace the windows in kind. Try to keep as many of the old windows as possible and to, and to maintain the siding as practically feasible. So I can certainly, we can certainly dive into each of those details. There were several items. I could probably call up on my computer.
It's okay.
The list, but, but the only items that we would ask for flex, more flexibility or absolvement from this board are those two recommendations. Again, our siding would match in kind to what's there, just with modern materials, with modern, just not even modern, just, you know, new of the same material. And windows are, would be replaced to look identical to what you see both in the renderings and what you see on the technical drawings.
The elevation is just on the screen right now. Is that the elevation was approved in two thousand and sixteen?
Yes, sir. And that is also facing inward to the property. That is not facing out to twenty-five A. The primary entrance, the primary entrance, there you go, that's facing twenty-five A. The primary entrance is from the parking lot, which is north of the building.
Any questions by the board?
I, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have an objection, but isn't the, the change or the, what he wants to change with the materials, isn't that the jurisdiction of the Historical Advisory Committee, not this board?
If it's, I, they have to check with it. I, I would think the building department as well, but if it's similar material, I don't think they'd have a problem. Whatever, we could always condition it based on HDAC approval for new materials. But the, the elevation that we're looking at now, I believe, once you change it with these similar products, the elevations are not going to change and this was approved by the HDAC. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, like I said, I have no, I have no problem, you know, putting in the, the new materials and, like similar materials, new. But, but I, I thought that that would be up for the Historical Advisory Committee to approve or disapprove that.
You know, I don't have.
We can work on the language of a condition.
Yeah, I mean, it's a similar look. Nothing's going to change the look, but as far as the, the existing, I believe you mentioned earlier, it was lead paint used on those shingles?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we could look into that, but is that the only question you have, Mr. Smith?
That's it.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
What are your plans for lighting? Did I miss that? Did you discuss that at all as far as?
Currently, we, I didn't have any in my presentation, but we do have, we're, we're replacing porch lights, things like that. Again, you know, the streetscape from, from twenty-five A is still to maintain this residential look. You know, where the existing porch lights and sconces and such would be replaced in mind and comply with, with the town lighting code. On the north side of the property, which is where people will be parking, they come off of Randall Road, will be parking, walking to the building, will be maintaining our existing lighting plan. I, I just want to point out, we have a parallel permit approval process going through the town right now, which has to do with the balance of the site for site plan approval, which includes a new, replacing the existing parking lot with a new parking lot, bringing in sustainable features, new lighting that complies with town code, getting rid of the very high commercial industrial lights, combined with the demolition of all of the non-significant, non-contributing buildings that litter the site.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions by the board? We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we close this, this hearing and place it on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Walutis.
Mr. Chairman, this is Board member Pete Zarcone. I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Zarcone. Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven oh. Thank you, Mr. Russo.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, before you start the next hearing, can I just mention that for number six, Jennifer Leeds was in the queue and I missed her. She listened. She had no problem with the, the conditions and I just want to put that on the record for you.
Okay, can we incorporate that into application number six for the record? Okay, thank you, counselor. Item number eight, the arboretum at Farmingale is going to have to be re-advertised for a date certain, which they're going to have to pick, request. We're not going to pick a date because I'm not sure what they're doing for the tournament, but they'll have to re-advertize. So we're going to move on to item number nine, North Bellmead Road.
This twenty, two thirty-five North Bellmead Road in Swetoket and is owned L Industrial One and is two point eight one acres. The proposal is to construct a canopy, new signage, new parking area, new generator and new curb cuts. There are six staff recommendations, last dated nine fifteen twenty twenty. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, is the applicant present on this, counselor?
Uh, yes, I have Mr. Manicone. He's there.
I'll wait till you bring him in.
He's in.
I don't, I don't see him.
He's down. Say something, James, and you'll pop into view.
Hello, Lee. Pleasure to see you again.
There he is.
It's amazing how sound activates everything.
There you go.
All right, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Manicone, you want to?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here, well, to be in my kitchen, but to be with you this afternoon.
I knew something smelled good.
I got a little sauce on the stove. This is an existing building. It is a medical office. The curb cut to the north, that angled curb cut on Bellmead, that is an existing curb cut, as is the curb cut off of Technology Drive. We are proposing the curb cut to the south because this is going to be a, an endocrinostomy, an endocrinoscopy surgical suite. And the reason we're requesting the curb cut to the south is because the surgical suite is going to be on the south end of the building. And the canopy is for the patients to come in, be, to park under that canopy and brought in on that south side of the building. So that is the reason we are requesting approval for the canopy and for that curb cut. And then some minor parking and associated with that application as well as that generator.
Okay, we have highway comments on this?
We, we've addressed the comments from, from planning. I don't know of any other comments that exist.
Okay, you, you did receive a copy of the staff conditions, recommendations?
I believe we did, yes. We have no objection to them.
No objections to them. Commissioner, was there anything from highway or something that the board should be aware of?
The traffic safety comments right now for you.
Okay.
They have no traffic safety concerns. They note the congestion on three forty-seven at Bellmead and note that the DOT is looking to reconstruct that in the future and that should mitigate the congestion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, does the board have any questions? Was there anyone else in the chatroom, counselor?
I have one question.
Ms. Kelly?
The traffic, when people leave, they go out onto Technology Drive?
Yeah, because the, the two, the two ingress, they are one-way only.
That's what I, I.
Yeah, they're in only.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping. Thank you.
Other questions by the board? May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing, place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Smith?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dunn. Mr. Zarcone?
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Item number ten is being held to, I think, November ninth, you mentioned, Ms. McCallion? Is Ms. McCallion with us?
She stepped away, sir.
Okay, I believe that's being.
Yes.
November ninth, okay. Item number eleven is a site plan with secret determination. It's Mount Sinai Meadows at Mount Sinai.
Let me scroll down here. There we go. The property is located on the south side of this concert highway, State Route twenty-five A and Myrtle Street in Mount Sinai. It's owned PDD Plan Development District. The overall project is twenty-eight point five four acres and first phase, phase one, which is before you today, is twenty-one point two six acres. There's one hundred and forty one and two bedroom dwelling units proposed, five thousand sixty-five square feet for a community building, a nine thousand square foot pump station, a fifteen thousand square foot storage building, thirty-three hundred square feet of retail, which is existing, for a total of one hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine GFC square feet of building area. Just getting started, turn to my pages here for you. There are ten staff recommendations, last dated ten nine twenty twenty. And there is also a finding statement that is required under SEACRA.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is the applicant president, counselor?
Yes, they're here.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Stephen Losquadro.
Good afternoon, counselor.
Six forty-nine Route twenty-five A, Rocky Point, New York, on behalf of the applicant, Mount Sinai Meadows. With me is Christopher Robinson, P E from R M Engineering, who is the engineer for the site. And I can see Chris has made it. I see him below on my screen, so thank you for having us. Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, as, as the commissioner set forth, this is the first phase of, of a site plan for what is a planned development district, a PDD. Overall, the site is thirty acres. Ms. Riley set forth the nature of the phase one of the PDD that's before you today. This does stem from a change of zone that was before the town board in the not-too-distant past. It was the product of great collaboration and, and much back and forth with staff, with former Commissioner Bertoli, with Mr. Sanzano presently, and of course, with the Mount Sinai Civic Association. And the nature of what is before you reflects that collaborative effort that was done in conjunction with the civic to reflect what they wanted to see on the site, consistent with what the applicant proposes. With respect to the site itself and the build-out, of course, there is, as was mentioned, residential, multifamily, of course. There's office development, retail development and a bank with a drive-through, all that will proceed over time, particularly with respect to the multifamily residential development. That is going to be geared towards and marketed towards millennials. And that was done in specific conjunction with the Civic Association that wanted to see that as a type of housing stock that would be made available in the Mount Sinai community. Taking into account that many younger people, particularly younger professionals, are leaving the community and the state in their estimation, which I don't disagree with. And also that there are many opportunities for such young professionals to work in the areas such as St. Charles and Mather and Brookhaven National Lab, particularly with regard to the planned collider that's going to be coming online shortly at BNL. Not to mention Stony Brook University and the medical parks there. This would provide a housing stock for younger professionals and millennials so that they would have an affordable and meaningful opportunity to live within their community. Towards that end, I am going to pass off now to Mr. Robinson because many, many of the amenities that were crafted and then inserted into this application reflect what is geared towards the millennial housing stock that's going to be on the property. And in fact, as we further went back and forth with Mr. Sanzano, those amenities somewhat changed, but in the sense that they were enhanced and modified to further reflect input from staff. So at this juncture, I'm going to pass off to Mr. Robinson, who will speak to amenities and features that are particular to this site, particularly those that have been added since the change of zone was approved. And he'll also be available to answer technical questions regarding the layout and development of the site that you may have.
All right, counselor, before we ask Mr. Robinson to speak, have you received a copy of the staff recommendations?
Yes, sir, I have, and, and the applicant does concur with them.
Okay, okay, Mr. Robinson, can you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, would you like to speak?
Good afternoon, Chris Robinson, President of Robinson and Mueller Engineers, fifty Elm Street, Huntington, New York, here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Steve, for the introduction. The site you have in front of you for phase one of Mount Sinai Meadows consists of a twenty-acre multifamily component, which is the south half of the property, and a little over one acre, which is the existing music store located on the corner of Myrtle and Wisconsin. Primarily that component of the application is the existing retail building, which will remain with some minor modifications to the parking lot that go with the widened, the widened Myrtle Street roadway in that area. Primarily the, the multifamily component, as you can see in front of you, consists of fourteen buildings, one hundred and forty residential units, twenty-eight of which are one-bedroom, one hundred and twelve which are two-bedroom. All the buildings will have a full basement. The basement, the, the first floor units will have direct access for the basement for, for storage. The second floor units will have cellar entrances on either end of the building to large storage lockers down below, which we've really identified for, you know, mountain bikes, kayak, other, you know, skis, the kind of thing that, that, that young millennials like to store and have with them at their apartments, but don't have a lot of room in the apartment to put it. So we chose to put in full basements with storage downstairs to handle those kind of items. Since the change of zone application was done, we have added a very substantial clubhouse with a swimming pool, a community garden to the north of it. We've had a, a dog run, a, a large open lawn area. We call it the Great Lawn behind the clubhouse with some perimeter, perimeter low lighting around it. So it can be used for, you know, pickup games or, you know, other, other outdoor, outdoor rec activities. We can continue with the boulevard, Boulevard-style roadway coming in from the Wisconsin Port Jeff Highway or Route twenty-five A in this area with the raised median, rain garden in the median, a roundabout. And then as you come south to the clubhouse area, we have angled parking and a substantial center median landscape treatment in there. So you can come down to the clubhouse, turn around. We have nice ample parking in the clubhouse area. We've also set the internal roadways up with bike lanes around the perimeter of it, walkways in and around the buildings inside that overlook the, the natural drainage areas, which are, are, are well landscaped, grasses and the like, to really provide a nice community atmosphere in the building. You can see the, the rendering there is the, is the, is the, the roundabout with the center clock tower and then the, the layout below. You can see we have substantial perimeter buffers all around the south side against the community to the south, towards the paper road, Hollick Avenue. We have, the, the buffer wraps around to the east side, which borders the, the County Road one eleven right-of-way, which is a road that has not yet been built. We have naturalized retention areas in the northwest section of the area, as well as in the, in the center, essentially a center of natural landscape courtyard amongst the department units.
Excuse me, can I ask a question just quickly? I had a question in the chat, so I just wanted to ask. For the residents that are on Tammy Drive, I just can't read the map. It's very small for me. On the residents on Tammy Drive, what is the buffer there?
The distance on that buffer? Certainly. I just need to switch my screen so I can see the one I had open. The buffer on the south side is a hundred and thirty foot.
Hundred and thirty-foot natural buffer?
Hundred and thirty foot of natural, and then there's a little few more feet before you hit the curb line, so we have a little bit of clearing along to install the curb work. That hundred and thirty-foot buffer wraps around. It becomes a hundred and fifty on the southwest corner. I'm not sure which is Tammy Drive. And it stays a hundred and fifty around the west side of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Think Tammy is the people on the map of Crystal Brook Estates?
Crystal Brook Estates would have the hundred and fifty-foot buffer then behind it.
Thank you.
I have a question. The, is that the only entrance by the roundabout in and out of the complex?
We have an entrance, emergency entrance that'll be built in the future when we do phase two and three, which will be Vincent Street.
Okay, that was my question, was concerned. It's a single lane in, a single lane out. I was wondering what happens on phase two and three.
Yeah, phase two and three will, it'll be expanded over there.
Does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, I'd also like to say that we are adding a traffic signal at Myrtle, and so we'll have full access to that signal in and out of the property, so be able to go northbound to the, to the west. And we did note on the staff comment about bringing that center median on Myrtle, removing it further south, so it starts at the beginning of the development of the Mount Sinai Meadows property, so as not to impact the existing operation, which is the out parcel, the shopping center. We concur with that.
Okay, did Mr. Sanzano speak to you about the music store? They were making a request on the entrance, or there was a curb cut?
There's a curb cut for the music store onto Myrtle Street, which is being modified because Myrtle Street is a much narrower road today than it will, than, than it will be, since it's being widened to handle the additional lanes through there. There's a little modification. I haven't gotten anything new from Mr. Sanzano on, on what you see in front of you.
I think what he's referring to is the resident, oh, the property owner who asked that you move the median back so that he can get out of the shopping center?
Yeah, we're gonna pull that median, based on the, on the comment, the staff memo is to pull that median further south, south of the music store driveway, so that, that, that shopping center can be able to leave and, and access the traffic light without having to go around the roundabout.
Questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, John Rose, I have a question for Mr. Robinson. Talking about that traffic light, when you get to, off of Myrtle Street onto twenty, onto Wisconsin Highway, I believe right now it's only a right turn only you can make. Will you be able to make a left? Is it gonna be modified so that you can make a left turn out of there also, or is it gonna remain right turn only?
No, it'll be full access. We've already gone to the state D O T. We're removing part of that median and reshaping it and redoing the, the lane arrangement in there, so to be able to go west and to, and east.
Okay, so that, I wanted to clarify that, and as far as, I believe there was two cross accesses, one to the north, one to the west. Was the one to the west gonna cut into King Cullen Shopping Center? Is that right?
There's actually, there was a requirement as part of the change of zone that we do have a cross-access to the west into the back of the King Cullen Building, or the old King Cullen Building. That would happen during the next phase when the medical office is built in phase two.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's part of the future project, and now you had just mentioned that a bank and retail, et cetera, is that all gonna be built on phase one, or is that gonna be in the phase two or three portion?
Those items, the bank and the retail that Mr. Losquadro talked about, was at the time of the change of zone, phase two and three would have been more of a commercial center with retail and a bank and the like. What our client right now is proposing for, for phase two and three is, is more office-related, medical office, so we have the plans that we submitted along with the master plan for those phases show those two new buildings as medical office buildings in the future.
Yes, I saw that. It was pretty substantial-sized medical buildings.
Yeah, each one's about forty-seven thousand square feet, a two-story building. Phase three is forty thousand square feet is a two-story building.
Okay, terrific. Thank you for your answers. I appreciate it.
Do you have an estimated timeline for phase two and three?
I do not at this moment, no.
Okay. Other questions by the board?
Just one perhaps clarification, Mr. Chairman. Where the houses are in Crystal Brook Estates, along with the hundred and fifty-foot natural and undisturbed buffer, it's really the corner of the property that the great lawn abuts, and the pool area and the recreation building. So they're really even further removed from the actual apartments themselves, if that makes a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other questions?
John, John Rose has one more question. Behind the music store, going down Myrtle on the left-hand side, there was, there seemed to be a residential house there. Is that part of this, and is that gonna be removed, or is that gonna?
Yeah, that, that will be removed as part of phase one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in, in the picture in front of you, it's kind of the cleared area on the, on the east side of the Myrtle Avenue extension. That's where the house exists. That'll be removed as part of this phase.
Terrific, thank you.
It's, it's shown on the demolition plan in the set of plans that were submitted.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions by the board? Seeing none, they have a motion?
Oh, wait, Mr. Chairman, I have several people chatting me, chatting with me privately. They haven't indicated that they want to speak in the meeting. So can you just give me a moment? Mary Ann Smith would like to speak from the public. I'd like to let her in.
Certainly.
And most of the questions that I have been getting have to do with the buffers adjacent to the residential properties. So maybe in the meantime, can you reiterate for the public what those buffers are going to be?
Okay, I'll let Mr. Robinson readdress those questions, but let's bring Ms. Smith in, see what she asks.
All right, she's coming in now.
Ms. Smith, are you there?
He's coming in right now.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Smith?
Yes, hello.
Hello. Can you, I can't see you yet.
I'm here.
I believe you. Can you please raise your right hand?
Yep.
Do you swear to tell the truth, swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay. All right, Ms. Smith, what is it you'd like to add?
I'm, I'm just concerned about the size of the buffer myself, only on the southeastern end. And there was no mention made of the buffer on the other ends of the property, like by Hickory Street.
Okay, I know it was a hundred and fifty foot in the south, so let Mr. Robinson, when you're finished with your questions, I'll bring Mr. Robinson in.
All along the north side of that, that Hollick Avenue paper street is a hundred and thirty-foot buffer.
Hundred and thirty foot of undisturbed woods, right?
Undisturbed woods, yeah.
And how, from that buffer zone to the apartments, like what's, you know, how far is it from the actual apartments?
It is. The apartments, the nearest apartment is a hundred and seventy-five feet from the.
On top of the one-fifty?
Including the hundred and thirty-foot.
Oh, including, okay, including that. And as far as sewage, what's the deal with the sewer system? I mean, some of us on Hickory still have well water, so I'm a little confused, you know, concerned about the influx of all this wastewater.
Certainly. We, we're building a pump station, and we'll be pumping our sewer to the Selden Sewer Treatment Plant. We have a contract or sewer agency agreement with Suffolk County to accept the sewer flow from here.
Okay.
There'll be no onsite septic tank or no onsite treatment plant.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. Counselor, you think that addresses the questions from some of the chatroom public?
I think that's, let's see. Yes, I think we addressed those on, on the west side, right, that were on Tammy Drive. They had, again, and that was a hundred and fifty feet, so I think that seems to answer the questions that I'm getting.
Okay. The board have any other questions? They have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, John Rose will make a motion to close this public hearing and place the matter on the decision calendar.
Motion to close by Mr. Rose.
Okay, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Aludis.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
The chair is going abstain on this application, so it carries a six in favor, zero abstain, objections, and one abstention. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Item number twelve, U-Haul moving and storage at East Patrick.
Property is located in the southwest corner of Patrick Gap Hank Road, C R one-oh-one and Robinson Avenue in East Patrick. Parcel is zone J Business Five, and a lot area of three-point-three-one-four acres. It's a site plan with special use permits for U-Haul moving and storage, redevelopment of the fifty-seven thousand eight-hundred-ninety-five-square-foot mini-storage warehouse facility with rental vehicles and accessory overnight storage of registered vehicles and moving supply retail use. There are eleven staff recommendations last dated eight-thirty-one twenty-twenty. The staff recommends approval of the site plan and the special permits for a mini-storage warehouse facility and rental vehicles and waivers of special use permit criteria with the following conditions. And that's those eleven that I mentioned.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Counselor, can you bring the applicant in?
Yes. Mr. Palata, why don't you say something, and then you pop up on the screen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I see you now, Mr. Palata. Can you please raise your right hand? You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Okay, you want to talk, speak on the application?
Sure. I'm Mark Palata, Key Civil Engineering, offices at six-six-four Blue Point Road, Oldsville, New York, here for the applicant U-Haul. Basically, the application was for the renovation of an existing one-story building to mini-storage. In two thousand seventeen, the applicant received a rezone of the property from J-two to J-five, and also received a permission for outdoor storage. We've been going back and forth with planning staff, addressing their comments, and I think we've come to the point where we can be before you, and basically, we're, we're looking for mini-storage and also two special permits for the mini-storage and for motor vehicle rental and some waivers on the special permit criteria. I believe all the planning staff comments have been addressed, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, Counselor, do we have anyone in the chatroom?
There's no one, but we did, we did receive a letter in opposition, and their main concern had to do with the commercial truck traffic. Maybe you can address how maybe you can address that issue?
I'm not sure I understand the issue, that the commercial vehicles that'll.
The neighborhood, the residential neighborhood, that's to the north and west of this. They have some truck traffic. I guess the question is whether this site is going to generate commercial truck, truck traffic for the area.
Gotcha. Okay, well, in general, the self-storage use is a very low generating traffic use. Unfortunately, I didn't conduct any of those I T E calculations. I can, but typically, for this type of use, it's very low. Probably, it'll be lower than anything that was there previously. I mean, it is a county road. We've received approval from Suffolk County D P W for our access. So I think my response to that would be, I wouldn't expect it to have any significant impact to, to the road.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor, was that a letter or an email you received?
It was a letter. It was a letter that was received, so it should be, technically, it's in our record, but in case the person's watching, I wanted to have the answer.
Yeah, as long as it included as a public record. I have two quick questions. The elevations on the building, and what is the actual purpose of the mobile units? Is that for expansion of the facility? Or why would you want mobile units on a site like this?
I believe it was just for additional square footage.
The mobile units, what do they look like? Are they gonna be similar as other?
They're not mobile. It kind of a shipping container look like. I believe we submitted photos of it, or at least a spec sheet on it.
Do we have it online, and we can, the board can view, look at it?
There you go.
So it doesn't even match with the elevations on the building look like. It looks like just in a container somewhere on the site.
It is ship, shipping container-like and can be lift up, lifted up like a shipping container. They, they would match the U-Haul colors. The doors would be orange. The side would be white.
These are going to be on the south side or the north side?
The south side.
So they're going to be facing one-oh-one as you pass one-oh-one, as you go down one-oh-one. You'll be looking at those along with the building, correct?
Actually, they're, they're more or less perpendicular to Sills Road, so you'll only be seeing the, the small end of them. And then they kind of face the building. You can see them there. She's pointing to them on the screen.
Do you have plans? I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I just have another question. Do you have plans at all for any landscaping along the roadway to buffer this a little bit?
Yes.
Mr. Palata, before you respond, let the record show that Ms. Kelly is asking the questions at this time.
I'm sorry.
Then, Mr. Palata.
Okay, yes, there, the, quite a bit of landscaping being proposed. Currently, the asphalt goes right up to the property line, and it's just a sea of asphalt. You can see that's up on the screen now is the landscaping plan. It's pretty extensive. It, it's minimum offset is fifteen feet up along Robinson and slightly on Sills Road. Then it goes to twenty-five feet. And then on the, when you come in on the left, if you're coming in on the left, there is a drainage reserve area, which is currently a mixture of broken-up asphalt and, and weeds right now. That'll be planted with wildflowers. A bunch of street trees proposed, as well as we're adding buffer plantings wherever it was sort of missing with the adjacent neighbor.
Okay, I. You know, that's a concern because there used to be a lot of, years ago, there used to be a lot of evergreen plantings along there, which helps soften it, and there's also a U-Haul company right next door, so what happens with that?
Hmm.
In a little shopping mall, right to the west, there's a U-Haul rental.
Are you referring to Lowe's?
No, not Lowe's, right next door to you, just to the left, to the west, I'm sorry. There's a little, a little shopping center, a little strip mall, or you wanna call it, and they have rentals there, so I didn't know whether, you know, you were.
Well, the rentals are, are a an accessory to the main use, which is mini-storage. So it, you know, it's, it's vans and trucks to be rented to people who want to bring their goods there, so.
No, I understand that. I was just wondering if, so there'll be the building next door that rents U-Hauls, and then you'll be renting the U-Hauls, so that was what my question was, I guess.
I guess so. I'm not familiar with, with, what you're speaking of, but I guess, yes, that is possible.
That's all. Thank you.
All right, other questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. It's in regards to something that's in that letter again that we received today. It makes a mention on Hewlett Avenue, but looking at this picture here, it doesn't believe that Hewlett's even touching that application, correct?
Looks like it's further west, if that's what you're referring to.
Right, yeah, because they make mention that there's no sidewalks. I wasn't sure if this Hewlett Avenue was a part of that application. So to me, it looks like it's not.
I think we lost Mr. Robinson.
No, Hewlett Avenue is, is the street, the next street east. We do not abut it.
You don't? Okay, yeah, because they were just talking about possibly there were no sidewalks. I wasn't sure if that was part of your project or even close to your project that that would be a consideration, but it doesn't look like it even touches it, so.
We are redoing the sidewalks along Robinson Avenue, and most, and some of them on one-oh-one, the ones that were in poor shape.
Okay.
So we're putting new sidewalk and carpet.
Thank you.
All right, that was Mr. Zarcone asking that question for the record.
I apologize, yes. I apologize, yes.
Uh, I have one quick request, Mister Robinson. Is it possible within the next ten days or so that you can have elevations for the trailers matching the elevations on the building submitted to the board?
Did you mean to say Mister Pilata?
Uh, Mister Pilata, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We do have a Robinson Avenue on my application, so it's a little
Trying to read this, it's so tiny on the screen.
I'm, so, so the request is that we provide elevations of the portable?
Yeah, so, so if we sign off on this, the elevations on those portable units or they consider mobile units or match the elevations on the storage facility itself?
I, I believe we can, we can comply with that request.
Okay. Other questions by the board?
Mister Chairman, this is Richard Smith. Just a quick question and a comment. This, this is the, except for those new manufactured buildings that you're bringing in, the storage buildings. This building is all existing and you're just converting it to a mini storage?
Correct.
And I think the, the comment I have is what the person in the letter who sent is saying that people that come by on Sills Road or whatever, they're going down Hewlett as a cut through. And, and a lot of truck traffic is going down Hewlett as a cut, cut through, which is creating some traffic concerns for the person who sent that letter. And they were worried that there might be more trucks coming from this facility that would add to that truck congestion on Hewlett Avenue. I believe that was the essence of that letter that was sent.
Understood. I guess I would respond to that, that mini storage in general, its generation is, is pretty, pretty low altogether. I, I can see where someone might that might be an issue if you look, I'm looking at an overall on Google Earth and, and Hewlett is a, it looks like a major cut through, a, a straight shot. The first straight shot off the South Service Road on Sunrise Highway that brings you down to Montauk. And basically dump, dumps you out at the corner of Sills and, and Montauk Highway, so. Uh, I think it, it probably has a lot of existing truck, tough, truck traffic because of that. I, I mean, I would tend to think that GPS would bring, if someone was coming to the subject facility, it would tend to bring them down Robinson Avenue as it brings you right to the facility, whereas on Hewlett, you'd have to go past it and sort of come back north on.
Any other questions by the board?
I have a question, Mister Chairman, Steve Walutis. I, I have a question regarding the mobile units or shipping containers. What is the purpose of these units?
It was additional square footage.
Why? Is there any reason why they can't be permanent structures as opposed to mobile units? I don't understand.
Strictly cost.
And are these structures going to be moved around or they're going to stay in one fixed location?
They're, they're meant to stay in one location. They actually get bolted to the ground.
All right, thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
They're prefabricated buildings, Mister Walutis. And if they're going to stay for more than a hundred and eighty days, they're going to end up having permanent foundations or settings. They'll have to be, they'll have to go through the building department and they'll have to demonstrate how they can be made permanent.
Thank you. Other questions by the board? May I have a motion?
So Mister Chairman, you want to keep this hearing open for written comment for those elevations?
Exactly. Yeah, I'm gonna make it a condition for, you know, leave it so the board can review and make sure that those mobile units match the elevations on the building itself. So right now I need a
Motion. Okay, Mister Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing, but allow ten days for written comment by the public. And also for the applicant to provide elevation to the planning department so that we can see you know, give you some more detail on, so we can render a decision.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Kelly.
Yeah, this is Board Number Pete Zarcone. I'll second that motion.
Second by Mister Zarcone, Mister Walutis.
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Mister Smith?
Aye.
Mister Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you. Item number thirteen. August at Yaphang.
Property is located on the east side of Sills Road, seven hundred and seven feet west of County Road one oh one in Yaphang, zoned L Industrial One. And is a lot area of seven point zero two six acres. No building is proposed. It's the construction of a storage yard for a landscape contractor with two special permits. One for outdoor storage and one for overnight parking of vehicles. There are nine staff recommendations last dated nine twenty one, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant with us, Counselor?
Yes, I have Chris LeBate.
Bring Mister LeBate in.
Who's there?
Mister LeBate, can you hear us?
Yes, I am, Mister Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, okay, can you raise your right hand, please? You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mister LeBate, you want to go over the application with the board and the public?
Sure. My name is Christopher LeBate of the firm Lab Crew Engineering, located at two seventy-three Hawkins Avenue in Ronconcombe. Uh, we're here tonight for this application for a storage area for industrial uses as permitted by the planning board. This site is approximately a little over seven acres, located just south of the LIE off County Road one oh one, also known as Sills Road. This site and all surrounding parcels, except for the Long Island Railroad to the south, are zoned L one industrial. There is no intention for any buildings on this site, except maybe future office trailers by tenants, which will rent the space, uh, which I believe will require a permit by this board. We're asking for no variances, just standard permits for a site of this use, outdoor storage and overnight parking of registered vehicles. This project is perfect in this location for correct zoning and use. This will clean up the existing site and illegal dumping that has been happening on this property. The property's been thoroughly reviewed by all departments, including a DEC submission, which gave us a letter of non-jurisdiction. Well, one of the conditions was a clearing of the property at certain times of the year, as noted in your staff recommendations. I have read and agreed to all the staff, or me and the client have read and agreed to all the staff recommendations and be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I just want to note that there is a change in the staff recommendation number four, those dates you referenced, the DEC recently changed the dates. So it should be December first to February twenty eighth of each year. They cut a month off each end.
All right, am I going to receive a new set of staff recommendations after this?
If the board approves it, it would be indicated in the approval letter.
Okay.
Counselor, do we have someone to speak on the application?
Do you have someone here to speak? They're coming in right now.
Are they there yet?
Um, they're in, but, um.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, it's Alicia Menachino.
Yes, Miss Menachy. Can you please raise your right hand? You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what is it you'd like to?
So I'm the attorney for the landowners of this, these parcels, Salvatore and Francisco Norberto.
I apologize, I didn't realize you were a counselor.
That's all right. I let you swear me in anyway. Uh, I have, I see a couple of familiar faces on the board, but I don't ever get the pleasure of, of appearing before you. I did send some correspondence via the online matrix that's available. Um, and I gave you a brief description of what's going on here. The applicant is a contract ND on this property. Uh, from a contract that was executed in early October two thousand eighteen, and we initially gave them permission to make an application for a building permit. Subsequent to the entry into, into that contract. My client, my client decides to declare it default because of issues we were having with the, how the process was going with the application process. Because the closing was contingent upon the building permit being granted, a building permit being granted. So we are actually in litigation right now in the Supreme Court on this. I represent my client, Francisco Norberto, in that action. And he went by the property and saw that there was a sign up for the public notice. He asked me to please get involved and expressed that he opposes this application. We no longer want this, these, these applicants to make any movements on this property. And at a minimum to hold the application in abeyance, but uh, really for it to be denied because this, this, these landowners don't, don't, they oppose this. They, they don't, they're not authorizing this action.
Did you initially grant owner's consent?
We initially did, Beth, yes.
And you're withdrawing that consent?
That's correct.
Okay, so there is current litigation on this parcel?
That's correct. I can give you the index number if you're looking for it.
Is the applicant aware of this?
Mister LeBate may have some tangential knowledge of it as, as the, as the expediter. But the action itself was commenced by the applicant BMB Homes. They, they sued for specific performance.
Hey Counselor, I'm going to defer to our counsel on this matter.
Um, well generally speaking, this is a dispute between two private parties. The owner, the owner's consent came in with the application. We can probably hold this off to get some more detail, I think. I mean, we have time to make, the board has time to make a decision and maybe get some more detail um, into the lawsuit.
I don't think that the owner, I don't think that, that the town is actually in possession of an owner consent. But as a practical matter, it was consented to, you know, just by a part and parcel of the contract of sale.
Well, that, I guess, is the question because generally what we ask for as part of the application is an owner's consent form that's signed by the actual owner, if it's not the applicant. So if you're saying that that did not occur, that's a different story. So I don't think it would have to go back. I'd like to go back then and review the application and see if that is there.
Understood.
That's in the file.
I think at this point, the best thing is to hold this open to an open date, not the next meeting, but perhaps further down the road to give sufficient time to find out what the, you know, what's happening. Is that okay with you, Counselor?
Thank you.
Counselor? Counselor Ray?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor.
That's fine with Counselor Ray as well.
There's too many counselors. I don't know who I'm talking to. Okay, so we're going to hold this to an open date when we get to that. All right, so it's Miss McCallum, are you available?
Yes.
What is the next meeting, after the November ninth meeting?
Um, twenty-third.
Twenty-third? Okay, so let me have a motion to hold this to a date certain of November twenty-third, and then we'll see what happens and we can always make a determination what we're going to move forward or what are we doing with this application at that time. I can have a motion on this?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I'd like to make an, a motion to hold this application to the November twenty-third meeting of the planning board.
Okay, so we have a date certain of November twenty-third, motion made by Miss Kelly. Now the second?
The Chairman, this is Board Number Pete Zarcone. I'll second that motion.
Second by Mister Zarcone, Mister Walutis.
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Mister Smith?
Aye.
Mister Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you. Okay, this time I'd like to go back to item number one. Coram, yes?
Go ahead, Mister Chairman, I'm sorry.
Item number one, Coram Omega Lot twenty-seven, the Coram.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the applicant's request for an increase in clearing limits from seventy percent to eighty-five percent in conjunction with all staff recommendations numbering one through four, last reviewed on August twenty-seven twenty twenty as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mister Rose.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mister Smith, Mister Zarcone.
Everyone aye.
Ms. Kelly. Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mister Walutis?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Miss, Miss Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Thank you. Item number two, Old Stump Road, Land Division, Lot B, Brookhaven.
Yes, Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve this application, subject to staff recommendations number one through five as covenants and conditions dated, I'm sorry, nine eight twenty as covenants and conditions of the approval.
This also has a denial of forty-eight percent with an approval of forty-six percent. Okay?
Yes.
All right, just got it. Motion by Ms. Kelly.
The Chairman, this is Board Number Pete Zarcone. I'll second that motion.
Second by Mister Zarcone, Mister Walutis.
Yeah, aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Mister Smith?
Aye.
Mister Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item three, Port Woods Lot eighteen at Port Jeff Station.
Mister Chairman, make a motion to deny a clearing limit increase from forty-six percent to ninety-seven percent. But to approve a clearing limit increase from forty-six to fifty-eight percent. I to approve that clearing limit with staff recommendations um, and comments numbered one through eight, last dated October nineteenth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, motion by Mister Smith?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mister Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mister Walutis?
Aye.
Mister Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item four, Lurin Woods Lot number six at Medford.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve this application, subject to staff recommendations, number one through five dated nine, ten, twenty as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Ms. Kelly.
Chairman, this is Board Number Pete Zarcone.
It's a, your, the staff recommendation is for a denial of fifty-nine and approval of fifty-eight? That's what your motion is for?
I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Okay, amended motion by Ms. Kelly, second by Mister Zarcone.
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Mister Walutis?
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Mister Smith?
Aye.
Mister Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, seven oh, motion carries, so move. Item number five, Pine Woods at Coram Lot one forty-two at Coram.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the applicant's request for an increase in clearing limits from fifty-eight percent to seventy percent in conjunction with all staff recommendations. Numbering one through six, last reviewed by staff on September tenth, twenty twenty, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mister Rose.
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mister Smith, Mister Zarcone.
Everyone aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mister Walutis?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item number six, Waiting River Estates Lot number forty-seven.
Chairman, this is Stephen Walutis. This is an application to increase the clearing limits to fifty-two percent to eighty-five percent. I have a motion to deny that aspect of the application to increase from fifty-two to eighty-five percent, but to approve the application to in, to increase the clearing limits to seventy percent, subject to staff recommendations, one through five, dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mister Walutis?
Chairman, this is Board Number Pete Zarcone. I'll second that motion.
Second by Mister Zarcone, Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Mister Smith?
Aye.
Mister Rose?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven oh. Item number seven, miscellaneous matter, Tesla Science Center Visitor Center in Shore.
Mister Chairman, I would ask to keep on the decision calendar so that conditions establishing concerning the siding and windows can be put in place.
Okay. Item number seven, stay on decision calendar. Item number eight is being held for indefinite date, pending the applicant's request for re-advertising. Item number nine, two thirty-five North Bell Mean Road.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site plan for the construction of a canopy, new signage, new parking area, new generator and new curb cuts with staff recommendations numbered one through six. Last dated nine fifteen, two thousand twenty as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Motion by Mister Smith?
Second.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mister Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly?
I vote aye.
Mister Walutis?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
She made the most.
I'm marking these down. Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0. Tyler Avenue Road and Coombe is being held, I believe, on November 9. Item number 11, Mount Sinai Metals at Mount Sinai.
Mr. Chairman, first, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the sequo finding statement received by the planning department on October 15, 2020, as part of the record. And then I would like to make a further motion to adopt a negative declaration for this.
You don't need a neg dac, you're doing the finding statement?
Gotcha.
All right, so let's have a motion for the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Phase 1 site plan for the site improvements of a planned development district, phase plan, which includes the development of 140 dwelling unit multifamily residential development, along with community building, clubhouse, public spaces, roadway improvements, and improvements to existing retail facility. This development will be at the corner of Wisconsin Highway and Myrtle Street in Mount Sinai. Future phases include office development, retail development, and a bank with a drive-through, as well as medical office space. Plans are consistent with the adopted PDD master plan. This application is being approved in conjunction with all staff recommendations numbering 1 through 10. Last revised on October 16, 2020, as covenants and conditions of the approval.
Okay, Mr. Rose, before we accept that motion, I need a motion to accept the findings.
I make a motion to adopt the findings of the sequo statement received by the planning department on 10/15/2020, as part of the record.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rose to adopt the finding statement. You have a second, please?
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0. Now, you made your motion earlier. That should be part of the record. Could have a second on Mr. Rose's initial motion?
Second, Richard Smith.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
The chair is abstaining on this application. So 6-0 in one extension being the chairman. Item number 12.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
On the statement finding, was the same motion 6-0-1?
Yes.
Okay.
U-Haul moving the storage. We're leaving this for written elevations. We can move on this, though, right, Counselor?
No, you have the, you left the record open.
You want to leave it open? Okay, so then we have
For the 10 days, so at the next meeting, if you want to move.
Item number
13.
13, August at Yaphang.
We're holding that to 11/23.
Right, okay. And then we have on the decision calendar, Lowe's at Stony Brook?
Yes, I have the findings and conclusions, so we can make a decision.
Does Smith have those findings?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can you make a motion on those findings?
Make a motion to deny this application as per the board findings dated 10/19/2020.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Smith for denial of the application. You have a second?
Yes, this is Karen Dunn. I will second that motion.
Second by Ms. Dunn, Mr. Zarcone.
I vote aye.
Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We also need a motion to deny, I guess, the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to deny the site plan, also as per the board findings dated 10/19/2020.
Motion by Mr. Rose, Mr. Smith.
I'll second that motion, Board Member Pete Zarcone.
Second by Mr. Zarcone, Ms. Kelly.
I vote aye.
Mr. Walutis.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries 7-0. Okay, is there anything the board would like to discuss before we adjourn this meeting? Counselors, anything you'd like to add? Commissioner? Okay, okay, a motion to adjourn.
The Chairman, this is Board Member Pete Zarcone. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Zarcone.
I second that motion, Patricia Kelly.
Second by Ms. Kelly, Mr. Walutis.
Aye.
Ms. Dunn. Ms. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.